Okay, it's seven o'clock. You ready Julie?
I'm ready.
Okay, welcome everybody there to the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for March 28th, 2023. I'll call the meeting order. I'll start with John.
John Smolaga.
Okay. Melanie?
Melanie Jelen.
Kathy?
Kathy Robs.
Is Sierra here? Nope.
Sierra's mic isn't working. Sierra?
Is she on mute?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we're all set.
I keep pressing mute, unmute, and they kept muting me.
That's alright, that's Julie. So we do have a quorum. Um, so I will seat Kathy for Stu, who won't be coming tonight, and I'll seat Melanie for Rob Horgan. So that's what we have. Um. Communications with the public, does anybody from the public have any issues they want to discuss? Hearing on, no, no, move on. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of February 28th, 2023. Has everybody read them? Yep. Any comments? Look for motion?
Mr. Durenzo, I'm sorry, I was muted when I was trying to speak from the public.
Ah, okay. Hi Jim Cully, how are you?
How are you sir?
Good.
I, I, I know that I'm not supposed to speak when you're reviewing the minutes, but I did submit a letter that I hope the commission would see, which was, and I see you're on the agenda, and this may be what, when it's addressed, that's fine, but it had to do with the uh, conditions of the approval for the stone led sand permit that was granted last month.
Okay, good time to bring it up, because you're right, we, we need to review that before we approve the minutes, obviously.
Thank you.
So, uh, Jim, what's the issue? And Julie, would you get the, the minutes up? This, this is on stone led sand, approval of a deer fence.
Right, the, the, the motion as reflected in the minutes added requirements of reflective tape and of cameras on the fences, and while uh, they're certainly being considered by the applicant, um, we don't believe that the actual motion of approval required those. There was a great deal of discussion by the commission, and I think most of the commissioners were basically saying, we hope that these things would be considered, and the answer is that they will. Um, but we do want, you know, that, that, the approval itself did not require these things, and so we're, there's a video, I don't, I'm just going by my own recollection of a month ago, I'm sort of late to this, I'm happy to remove, to review that video and provide references for what I think.
Jim, I, I think Karen did that, right Karen?
Oh, okay.
You did that, and then you, you, you sent me, you didn't send it to Jim, you know, the letter, the, the minutes as after you reviewed a video? Karen, are you here?
She may have, I've been tied up all afternoon, so I can check my emails.
Russ, no, they, the amended minutes only went to you and the commission.
Okay, Julie, could you bring up the amended minutes?
Yes.
And, and Jim, thank you for bringing it up now, because this is.
Well, thank you.
We, we gotta make sure our minutes are correct, right? In the red, Jim, is what, um, Karen stated was, was left out of the minutes. So, you're right, it, it says that they will be installed, or a statement must be provided as to how the fence will be monitored. The other, the other thing I, I want to know from the commission members, because I wa, I didn't, I got off the meeting, because I stepped down. Um, did Michael, Michael Klein submitted the report after the approval, correct? John?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw that, yeah.
Didn't, did that report, yeah, did that report have a different date of May 15th?
I, yes, yes, it did, Russ, it, it has a fence shall not be installed between April 1st and October 1st.
Which, was, was that ever, was that ever, report Karen, was that ever provided to, to the applicant?
Uh, yes, it was, Russ.
Okay.
Um, it was provided to them with the, uh, letter of approval, um, along with the, um, the unapproved motion at that point, and also the, um, updated conditions from Michael Klein. The applicant did receive all of those.
Right. So Jim, I, I think on your first issue, it, it looks like a statement must be provided as to how the fence will be monitored. And, and then the second, it does say the fence must be completed before May 15th, unless revised following further research by Michael Klein. Michael Klein obviously researched it, and it, it's a big difference, April 1st, uh, October 1st, so they would have to wait till October to install this.
Yeah, Russ, when, when we were, uh, talking about this with, with Michael, um, you know, it did come up, and he kind of threw May, May 15th out there off, off the top of his head. He, he really wasn't sure, and that's why he wanted to go back and research it and get back to us.
Okay, and that is in the motion?
Yep.
Um, respectfully, I, I, I haven't seen that, it, it sounds as if what you are saying is that you believe you approved the application with conditions that were not actually in the motion, but that were later added unilaterally by Mr. Klein without any opportunity for the applicant to address them.
Uh, no, the motion states that unless revised following further research by Michael Klein, and his research was sent to your client.
You mean after the approval?
It was part of the approval.
Yeah, he had to look into when deers are mating and to see what the mating season was, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because it changes, and it's becoming earlier due to the temperature changes and that sort of thing. I think that's why we did that.
So, this presents a problem for us. In addition to, I don't believe that you can actually condition an approval on terms that haven't yet been stated in the motion at the time of approval. Number one, you can't defer your authority to make decisions to an expert as to conditions, and number three, um, Mr. Klein, both in his letter that he submitted, uh, before the March meeting, and in his comments, said very clearly, these are not wetland issues, these are animal habitat issues, and for those reasons, I don't believe any of Mr. Klein's suggestions can be made a part of the motion. We haven't had a chance to address them, because he apparently came up with them after the meeting. Uh, and, and then finally, my client has a half, uh, I see that this is amusing to somebody, which is a little bit frustrating, but my client has hundreds of thousands of dollars of plants onsite or on order, following an approval at the end of March that he was going to start planning. If you tell him now that he can't start until the fall, um, it's, it's a tremendous problem.
Sounds like a legal one, huh, right? I mean, technically, um, you could appeal the, uh, the decision with the court.
Is that the only option you're offering us? I mean, can we not discuss this now? I mean, is there, is anything I've said true at all with any of the commissioners?
Well, you, there's, to, to me, there's two things going on here. There, there's the fence, and there's the plantings. The plantings were approved as part of the, if I'm, if I remember correctly, part of the original application for the driveway, so that, that's a separate issue, and there's nothing that stops you from putting in those plantings.
Or stops a deer from eating them? That you won't let us put the fence up to protect?
We're not, nobody said we weren't letting you put the fence up.
Well, you just did. I have an approval that says we could start now, and finish by May 15th, and now I'm being told that's not true, so what you're now telling me is, isn't even consistent with the approval that stated in your minutes, and it hasn't been corrected. How would the commission like to handle this? Would you like us to go back on the agenda to review this again in April? I, I, I don't want to go to Superior Court, I certainly don't want the commission to, or my client to. I think if I have, if, I think my client deserves the opportunity to hear and respond to any conditions that are made a part of a motion, uh, and in this case, he has it.
If this was sent out to him at the end of February, why are we just hearing about this now?
What we're going by.
It's a month later now.
Yeah, because we assumed that the discussion at the March meeting is the discussion that the commission relied on to make its decision, and the commission did not make a condition of its motion that we could not plant between April and October. You did not, that was not a condition of the motion, you should, we can all review the video.
Action from your client that, uh, we, we couldn't, uh, go by Mr. Klein's recommendation.
I, I, I don't believe your motion said that it's going by his recommendation in a letter dated of February. He spoke at the meeting himself, and he made a recommendation for openings in the fence every 10 feet, and coned tops, which we agreed to. So we agreed to all of the conditions that he suggested at the meeting right before you moved to approve the application. You're now telling us that you're, you meant to approve things in a letter none of us knew existed at the meeting, or we all would have said something, and something that potentially he decided should be a condition after the meeting, which completely hate, you, you, you cannot give up your authority to decide motions.
Any other commission members have anything to say? Your feelings?
Are we allowed to discuss this if it's not on the agenda?
No, well, we're discussing the minutes.
To the agenda.
Oh, the minute, this is just the minutes? Well, I mean, I was there, and I feel like we had good, I thought we were very liberal with our decision, and it was very clear at the end, I mean, Paul Samansky was on there, we, we're going to defer to when it was safe or not safe to put a fence around, you know, with the breeding deer. That's my, that's my personal opinion.
And, Russ, let me, let me hear from others first.
Russ, can I just add that the, um, uh, deer fencing is on the agenda further down, and the, um, report of Michael Klein is on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
It's not part of the minutes, but it's, it's later on the agenda.
Right. Anybody else? Who was actually at the meeting, uh, because I wasn't? I stepped down for this application, but this is an administrative issue, and we need to figure out a, 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 a good way. So I want to hear from everybody first, who was at the meeting?
Yeah, so Russ, this is Kathy, I was at the meeting, um, I, I, what I recall is there was a, quite a bit of discussion about, um, you know, potentially enclosing deer in the fence, particularly, um, young deer that, um, um, there, there was a lot of discussion, and, and I think Paul participated in the discussion and the concerns about potentially fencing in these young deer, or, um, or the doe, or, or whatever. And so, um, there was agreement that we would look at, um, trying to, you know, respect the mating process for the deer, and, and, um, and, and be sure that we're, this was completed so that that there's not risk to the deer themselves. That was, that was the conversation, that was the intent. Michael Klein was um, questioned about, uh, providing some input. He said he didn't have a number off the top of his head, but he could research it and get right back. And so that, that was the discussion, as I recall it.
Okay. Anybody else on the commission?
Um, hi Russ, this is Melanie, just kind of, um, piggybacking off of what Kathy said, I know, you know, all the commission members, we went around and kind of kept going after this idea of like, you know, making sure that we do protect, um, the young deer, so I know that that was one of the major um, conditions, because we wanted to make sure that no, like, none of the deer were getting stuck within that fence. Um, and I know, you know, Sierra like really emphasized that to make sure that, um, they were being protected.
Okay, this, that's everybody. Jim?
I just want to say respectfully, respectfully, 98% of what I heard at that meeting, each of you, when you were speaking, were admitting your comments were not within your jurisdiction. And Mr. Klein wrote it in his letter, and he said it in his presentation, and everything was presented as, as, uh, things that we hope you will take into consideration. Having said that, I do not wish, I did not review the recording from last month before tonight, I'm sorry, I did not have that chance. What, what we have done before is we received the, uh, I'm sorry, I keep saying February, the February meeting. We received the motion for approval. We noted that it contained two things in it that we are, we believe that were not made conditions in the motion for approval, and we asked to have them reviewed and removed. And in doing that, I'm now, you as commissioners are telling me that, that you have other conditions in the motion for approval that, that, you know, you believed were part of the motion. My, my point on all this is that the motion is what the motion is. I'm not looking to, uh, have another discussion on the same application. My intent was to ask that the video be reviewed. The motion starts with Mr. Horgan, who made the motion. And it's very, we don't have to have an argument about what we remember. We only need to review the motion that he made and any conditions in it that the commission voted to include other than his motion for approval. So I'm asking that it be reviewed, and that the motion that was approved reflect, be reflected in the minutes. If the commission believes that it made error in its motion for approval, or if we do, then we can come back to the April meeting. You are correct, we can start the plantings. I don't think every planting will be eaten by deer between now and the end of April, so, but, but this way we can, we, I would like us to be able to start some of this fence installation. We can start the planting, and maybe we can all come back and we can have a more focused and clear discussion on the motion itself and the conditions that you want to make of the approval. But I, I just would respectfully say, I, I've just never seen of it, I've been at this a little while, I've never seen a commission make an approval conditioned on things to be added by an expert later that are not discussed and made conditions of the motion. Or things that he might have suggested in a letter before the meeting and the discussion that they forgot to mention in the meeting. I've never seen it.
I think, uh, I, I think it would, it's, yeah, it's not, it wasn't done right administratively. And you can't have a condition added on, based, based on a letter by, um, by the consultant, it has to be part of the motion. And unless revised following further research, Michael Klein was what the commission understood to be the ability to, to make sure we had the right dates, but what should have happened administratively is the, the meeting should have been extended until that report what came in. So the applicant had the right to, to review it and comment on it. And this, in this way, the applicant didn't have, doesn't have any right to comment, and I'm, I know that, I know the court would throw this right out, so I don't want to waste time, money. On the other hand, Jim, your, your client told me, uh, he cares about wildlife, so I'm hoping that him as a person will take a, take a read of that report and, and discuss it with his, with his experts, and make, make sure we're not, we're not hurting wildlife. Um, but your point that this is, the commission doesn't have jurisdiction of wildlife unless it directly impacts the, uh, wildlife in the wetland. Obviously, the commission has made, uh, you, you know, rightly so, that we really don't have jurisdiction. We had jurisdiction on whether the fence could go up or not, and we, we could put conditions on it, but the commit, conditions must be in the motion. So I think, unless anybody disagrees with me, and it's fine if you do, I'm, I, I just been at this for a little while too, and I've been there with this kind of stuff. So, Jim, I, I like your idea, you know, to, uh, let's go to the April meeting, and, um, and work this out, but quite frankly, I, I think you, I think you have an approval. And I think that if your client wanted to go ahead with the fence, um, it wouldn't sit well with the commission, although that would be his right. I think it'd be better if we met in April, and, and we get that straightened out, as to what they're willing to do, and, and what they're not willing to do, and maybe just talk to their consultants, come up with, with a time that the, the fence should be, there should be a way out. I can't believe it would be May through October, I, I don't think, I, I don't know enough about deer to know if they're born all the time during the summer. Um, it would be in your client's best interest not to fence them in either. Because they're going to eat, they're going to eat all his plants, because that's all they're going to have to eat.
Right.
So I think we could come to a good solution that meets the commission's wish that we protect wildlife, even though it's not within our jurisdiction, except for very narrow circumstances, through no fault of our own. Um, and, and we go from there.
Did, Russ, I, I just want to say that, you know, I, I think that, you know, when we discuss this with Paul, yeah, we all recognize that wildlife on its own i- isn't within our jurisdiction, but he was willing to work with us on this, in this case, and that, that's how this got put in there, because Paul, Paul agreed that, you know, he's willing to work with us on that.
Good, then, then April, and April will work on it, right Jim?
Yeah, absolutely, and just for the record, Paul is not the applicant, Paul represents the applicant. What, that, what happened at your last meeting was Paul's representation of what the client was willing to do. I would respectfully say if Paul were told at that meeting or a motion were made that this could not occur beyond April 1st, Paul would have objected to it as well. I, I, look, I, what I'm being told here in terms of how, I, I can't speak for my client about starting the fence or not starting the fence, but if I, but what I can tell you is, I went to the meeting, I, I saw a corrected motion that reflected, that addressed the question that I raised, but that the commission raised the question of its own as to whether the condition of being done by May 15th is correct. So, so the commission is telling, is telling me that they believe that the approval included a ban as of April 1st. And, and so in that instance alone, I, I think, I'm certain my client would not proceed with putting a fence up that could catch young deer in the property. What I would ask, though, is ask this commission to consider, you have to remember that the only activity in the wetlands, the real activity here, and it is the minimus, is the installation of just the poles, not the fence fabric. And so I would ask whether the commission would have any objection if all we did between now and the next meeting was start with some of the installation of the poles, but not the fence fabric, which would have no effect whatsoever on the movement of deer until after the April meeting.
Yeah, uh, well, like I said, you have an approval. Um, you could, you could move forward, I, the, the issue that needs to be worked out as the condition. Um, the dates, again, that, that would have to be in the motion, not as a statement, um. But that, and, and it's only, you know, look, I'm not happy about this fence, everybody in the world knows that. But it's only fair to the applicant that they have the right to review, uh, somebody's opinion. If, even if it wasn't, uh, required by law or whatever, I think it's unfair to, um, make a condition in three weeks before, you know, he, three weeks before April 1st, he gets, he gets the, uh, report, and basically says you're all, you're out by April 1st. So I think we could work this, I know we could work this out, Jim. Um, but yeah, I, uh, does anybody on the commission see a problem with the poles being put in?
I don't, I don't.
Right? Because it isn't blocking the deer, and then the April meeting, we, we could all come to a, a good conclusion.
Right, and I think, I think the request was that we review the recording as well, right?
Yes.
Yes. But the motion, as you read it right there, corrected, is the correct motion, that's what the video shows. The problem with the motion is a legal one, in that a condition has to be put in the actual motion, and Jim's right that, uh, a, a consultant can't recommend a motion that the commission doesn't, a condition that the commission doesn't vote on. A specific condition. And if you think about it, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Russ, and Jim, the only concern I have is that the April meeting is at the end of April, and then, um, you know, if, even if we're go by the April, the May 15th date there of having the fence up, that, that still doesn't give a lot of time, does it?
No, we would work, we would work that out, John, realizing that we're going to delay them, you know, we would work that out.
Right, okay.
Russ, I just have a question, so are we?
Go ahead, Melanie.
Are we giving the okay, um, just for the poles, or for, like, to actually start the fencing? Because like John said, that May 15th is closed, so depending on like, what's acceptable today would depend on like how far they're able to get before then.
Right. So, they could, legally, they could start on this fence right now. And, and, but we, we agree with Jim, we would meet in April to come up with specific dates, and if, and that date won't be a week after we agree to something, obviously, that they don't have to be negotiated to, to a point where the, the applicant has sufficient time based on talking to his fence contractor. You know, if all my poles are up, you know, how long will it take to, to put the ring on? That's the only issue. As I see it.
I, I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, now Jim, on the motion, or a statement must be provided, provided as the fence will be monitored. They still have the right to do that, but the motion is clear, and it's conditioned there.
Yeah, I understand that, and it's also something we'd like to discuss, because it, and it, it ends up making the fence an ongoing monitored inland wetlands activity, which I think is worth some discussion.
All right, but remember, I, from what I understand, all that stuff was. From what I understand, all that stuff was discussed at the meeting and And the representative agreed to it.
Yeah, we
Before the motion.
What's in this motion, I I if if Mizetti tells me that she did review the video and this now reflects the motion that was made. I have no reason to object with that, but but what I'm objecting to is comments by the commission. And presumably that they could, after my matter is discussed, Still not having approved the minutes from February twenty eighth, they could go in and add something to the minutes to say there's confusion about this date And it's going to be clarified in April. So I assume what we're doing is trying to reach agreement That, yes, we will only begin with the polls. We will not put the fence fabric up. And the commission agrees that after I'm silenced and I can't speak when you're reviewing your minutes, That you don't add a condition that changes it that says we can't go past April first.
Oh, we can't do that.
But I just
It was never said in the meeting. The minutes are, the motion is exactly what was said in the meeting. Corrected after a review of a video. There's nothing different. What was said in the meeting to late lead up to this motion is something that I I don't think that we're at odds at. We're we're at odds about dates.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's what it is. We're at odds about dates and the commission agrees that the condition isn't valid Because the the applicant wasn't given the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, the meeting should have been extended until that report came in and could be discussed, but no big deal. Okay, we'll go back to the minutes then. We didn't, we didn't approve the minutes, right, Julie?
Correct, you still need to do that.
All right, so We can approve these minutes, because what we're approving is that the motion, which was is amended Is exactly as the minutes read. Therefore, we can approve these minutes, and then once we approve them, we can't change them. We can't even change. Well, we could change them before we approve them if we see mistakes. But we can't change that motion. So I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty eight, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Russ, are we going with the minutes that you guys reviewed or the amended?
The amended, I I the motion is to approve The amended minutes, correct.
Thank you.
All right, what's next? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
To There we go. Um, we're looking at Six Baker Road. The conditional approval.
Did they submit an after the fact application? No. No. Karen, did you contact them and ask them if?
I I I made sure that they knew there was a meeting and that they got the agenda, but I did not hear back and No, they did not submit a after the fact application.
Okay. Then I'm gonna let zoning know that they don't have approval for that apartment. Because that approval is contingent upon and after the fact application. They did send their own consultant to the last meeting Who testified that there should be things done to protect the wetlands and was gonna look into that. So I'll let zoning know, and when they're ready to come And submit an after the fact application, they could. The other option the commission has is to issue a notice of violation, because they constructed a parking lot without a permit. We could go that route. Any comments? We we could say either submit an after the fact violation by the April meeting, or we will issue an NOV. That's a good one.
Yeah, I I
Yeah, I like that one.
All right, let's let's do that one. And that if if they don't, then we're gonna withdraw the the approval into a denial for failing to meet the condition. Brian, are you on? No, that's probably Brian Neff, right? Okay. All right, what's next?
Okay, um, next on the agenda is twenty Painter Hill Road. The report by Michael Klein, which came in after the fact. Do you wanna not just skip over that and defer that to April?
Yes.
Okay, and so after that, we have ninety two Hemlock.
Okay. That's right. Do it. Brian, are you on that? No?
Yes, I drew the plan.
Oh, good. I I went out and looked. I have no problem. It's flat and no wetlands. A perfect lot. Um, Brian, my only concern, I I don't, I don't, I'm not sure we saw the plans last meeting.
Uh, they were they were submitted for the last meeting.
Yeah, is is there driveway drainage?
Yes. And the curtain drain along the driveway.
Right.
And there's a culvert underneath the driveway at the road.
Perfect. Great. I want to explain that to the commission. Even if the house or driveway is being built and there's no wetland nearby, the Wetland Commission Looks at where the driveway meets the road to make sure that there's a culver or some kind of Drainage that doesn't block the road drainage if needed. The first selectman or woman Uh, right now, it's a selectman, but um Will not issue a driveway permit unless wetlands is looked at it. And the other thing we do is we look at the driveway drainage itself, so it has no no bearing on If it's near a wetland or not. Because ultimately, our jurisdiction is to the top of the watershed, so if there's any potential to impact the wetland, Even if it's five hundred feet away, we still have jurisdiction. And if somebody builds a driveway that has really poor drainage And it goes into the road and silts up the road and that gets into a basin which ends up in the river, we we have jurisdiction. So it may seem funny to people who are building houses on a flat lot Where no, there are no wetlands nearby, why we do what we do, but that that's what we do and that's what we've always done. So I looked at it. There's no problem. I'm glad Brian is on. I I could I could have faith that the the design is right. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
A second.
All all in favor? Aye. All right. Good luck to the applicant and welcome to Roxbury.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're gonna love it here, unless you've been here for a long time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next.
Next one is ninety eight Chalobes Road West.
Yes, my son Joseph and I walked around Roxbury looking at all these lots on Sunday. We had a really nice time. That this one is at the end, you know, Chalobes Road is is broken up. There's the side we know with the tennis court, and then there's the other side that nobody knows about. And it ends, it just ends, and the applicant is proposing to build a house there. Julie, could you put that drawing up?
Yes.
And welcome to Lanes, who are here on this application. Could you zoom in? I I hate I hate this at work too, trying to Move these maps around. There you go. All right. So they're coming in from the bottom, which comes off of Route sixty seven near near the distillery. Everybody know where I'm talking about?
Yes.
So you drive up that end of Chalobes Road West, and then it just ends. And they're building a a driveway. I think the town's gonna improve the road Up until their driveway. Am I am I right, Lan David?
We are, we are paying for the improvement of that portion of the road.
Wow, Pat Pat Roy is good. So is there a design for that portion of the road that you're improving, or is the town gonna submit?
Yeah, it's there. It's part of that Brian's son, and he can vouch for it.
Okay, so I I really don't have a problem with it, as long as Brian, you see the huge gulch in the middle of it. So obviously, you're gonna have drainage to deal with it. The only problem I had, it's a great lot, really is. It's on a hill and then it steeply slopes down to a wetland area. It's it's not all wet, it's just Pulled up water in the woods, so to speak. And there's a curtain drain that was marked, a footing drain outfall, Brian, you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes.
Is there gonna be? It looks like you have a infiltration. No, that's for the roof drains, right?
Right, that's for roof drain is infiltration.
So this footing drain, I see it, it's just gonna hang on over the hill, basically.
Yeah, just just charging to grade.
Is there gonna be any riprap or anything to control any kind of erosion?
We could put a pad there. It's only a four inch pipe. Get some soil tests in that area. Down down eight feet, there was no groundwater whatsoever, so it's it's a fairly high and dry area. I'm not sure anything would actually ever come out of that footing drain.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just worried if a lot comes out, it's gonna create a channel right down to the wetlands and everything Is gonna end up at the bottom of the hill, but but I hear you, footing drains usually don't Catch her a lot of water in those situations. Is that what you're saying?
What's it's kind of a high and dry spot.
Yeah, well-drained soil.
Had no problems with with any kind of groundwater. It's all kind of like a bank run gravel that's in that area. It's very, very nice, well-grained soil.
At the bottom of Chalobes, you're not, you're you're just improving it up to the driveway. At the bottom of Chalobes, What's the design? I see. Is that a red pipe that?
Yeah, that's an eighteen inch culvert pipe that goes down through Five catch basins down to the bottom and connects into that lower basin that exists right now.
Oh, okay, all right. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Sarah, you have anything?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, it sounds like you walked it, Russ, and you didn't have concerns.
No. Just had a couple of questions, that's all. Well, I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome to town, even though I think you've been here.
Been forward to it.
Yeah, good. Okay, this is the last thing. Is John Cody on?
John Cody is on, and we have potentially one more one more thing, too. This is from the Land Trust review of the Highland Act and Highland Conservation Area. Or if you wanted to stay with the applications, um, and An app- an application did come in after we did the agenda for Connor Dillon. So I do have that if you want.
We'll we'll have to stick to the agenda and then add on things. We can't.
Right, you're gonna have to add that on, right?
Yeah, John, would you make a note to send Six Baker Road a letter that states If the after the fact application fee is not submitted by the April whatever meeting, Then the commission is gonna withdraw the approval.
Um, yeah, Russ, no problem. I can email Dennis first thing in the morning.
And 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 that the commission will issue a notice of violation for construction of a driveway without a permit.
Certainly, that's easy.
All right, so this is the Roxbury Land Trust. The the Hudson region is a grant. Uh, and it's called the The Highlands, and it's a grant to preserve really special properties. And if you look at the map of the towns that were added by, I believe, legislature, Roxbury's not one of them. But any town could ask to be put in this Highlands region. And if we are put in it, then we attract federal conservation dollars to for qualified land protection Opportunities, and that would be the Land Trust in our town. And what the Land Trust has asked is that we support this and write a letter of support to the first To the selectmen, because it will be the selectmen to vote to ask to be eligible for Highlands Act funded.
Right, Russ, I don't think it needs to be actually a a letter. It's just a recommendation that could just come from the commission. I mean, you know, If that needs to be a letter, that that's fine, but yeah.
Okay, we we could just make a vote then.
Right, yeah.
I I'll I'll make a motion To uh, to notify the town's Board of Selectmen That the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission supports The town requesting to be eligible for Highlands Act funding by entering Uh, part of the Highlands Act expansion. Do I have a second? Or I'm sorry, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I I second, although Yeah, I second.
All right, any discussion?
Um, I I was just trying to make the the map a little bigger. I just can't really see Where I
We're right under Washington.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bridgewater and Roxbury is not included.
That that's what I was trying to figure out. So is Washington included? Washington's included and we're not, okay.
Right.
I see it, I see it.
Initially started with just New York and Pennsylvania, and then they expanded it, I believe, last year.
Well, I actually, it was New York, it was Connecticut, New York, New Jersey and Pennsylvania. It's The yellow area was the original approval back in two thousand and four. And what's outlined there are the towns that are now available to apply for addition.
Well, we have to ask
Right, yeah.
Become part of that.
Yep.
So that's that's my motion. Second discussion. Any other discussion? I think this is a great thing to preserve. There's still some really high quality land in this town that deserves preservation.
I have a question. So on the frequently asked questions, it says town Um, like what does my town need to do? Town leadership. Uh, town council needs to state through a letter or resolution. So would us be voting be the resolution?
No, we're telling the town And then they would go Board of Selectmen to do that.
Okay.
We're we're making a formal request to them to get the ball in motion.
Okay, so then they would take it from there.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we need to, no problem. Next, we need to add a couple of things on to the Well, we have the Wetland Enforcement Officer Report.
John Cody, Julie, if you want to pull up my my page there. Uh, there we go. Um, the administrative approvals, I probably have like eight of them there, I think, something like that. It's been a little slow and Besides that, we could touch base as far as fifty five Garnet. We did have a court date last month. Russ and I went there and it was just basically continued till next month. There wasn't much activity in that at all, so next month will certainly, or we're supposed to be scheduled next month, so we'll find out more then.
Are are those sandbags still blocking the stream?
Yes, there's no, Russ actually said they removed a little bit, but everything's status quo.
So what happened was Uh, Ms. Grebela showed up and didn't have a lawyer and asked uh, Ms. Grebela showed up and didn't have a lawyer and asked for a continuation. So she could get a lawyer and the judge did ask her, you know, why don't you have a lawyer, you you were notified, you knew this was coming and she said that um, she's asked several lawyers to take it on, but nobody, she hasn't found anybody yet to to help. And Gail did ask, why can't these things be removed while she finds a lawyer?
Right.
That the that the town was being prejudiced by this and that um, the the judge, the judge seems to be wanting to be really fair to Mrs. Grebela because she didn't have legal representation. And I think all judges are are very leery of making decisions when when the when the defendant doesn't have representation. So she did ask Ms. And I I think legally, and I don't know this for a fact, but I don't think the judge could order her to do anything until the judge hears what's going on. And uh, she did ask Ms. Grebela, you know, in the meantime, why don't you consider removing the sandbags? And as of this date, they're still there, I think they were opened up just a little, but they're still there and what what we're gonna want is that they be totally removed from the property. So that's that on that.
Okay. And and when is this continue to, Russ?
They, they said within a month, but I haven't heard from Gail, so I'm gonna have to email Gail and say what's going on, been a month.
Yeah.
That it, John, you done?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we we have some requests to add applications on to the agenda. The first one is from Connor Dillon for a site on uh Berry Road. That would be where it meets up with Minor Bridge Road. Uh, this application is for a driveway. Connor's the contractor, the owner is is uh, Tony Fitzgerald. Um, so I need a motion to add this on to the agenda.
Make a motion to add this on to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, so this is added on to the agenda. But Brian, I heard you're on this.
Yeah, I'm working on a site plan and a driveway plan. Um, it's a driveway that comes off of Berry Road and there is one intermittent crossing uh, wetland uh, crossing of the driveway. So I'm trying to get the plans finished off, I can bring them in next week, somebody would like to go and take a look at the site. I'll have everything staked out on the property.
All right, so you did this just to get on and then we could set the sidewalk, no problem with that.
Yes.
Uh, let me know, email me when you have them and just email me the, the plans.
Okay, I could drop some paper copies off also. The office.
No, no, I, yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good.
It's easier looking at the bigger plans.
Definitely, now that you say it, and I'll, I'll, I'll meet up with different members and go out there separately.
Okay, very good.
So so Brian, there's no uh, uh, plan for a house at this point, just a driveway?
Well, we just showed a box for a house, there's a house site identified, we're not quite ready to build a house yet, but you know where it's gonna go, we know where the septic's gonna go and the well. So I've got those shown on a plan, the main concern is driveway access to the site.
So the driveway is coming off of Berry?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not on here, I don't, correct?
No, it's not.
Not on there at the moment, no.
But it's gonna come off of Berry and I I assume that corner is where the house is going? Or are they gonna, they crossing those wetlands is what they're at?
There's a circle on the, on the uh, plan, that's about where the house is gonna go.
Okay.
But it's going off of Berry Road, we're uh, skirting most of the wetlands and and close crossing at the narrowest point of wetlands for the driveway.
All right, what about, what about Minor Bridge Road, they can't come off a minor bridge?
It's pretty steep on that section of Minor Bridge and not a great sightline in terms of being able to see up and down. Um, it's a very wedgie area there too.
Yeah, that's cool, this tells me what I need to know, I I'm never knew there was an old Minor Bridge Road. Um, did it end there or?
I think it went up into Bridgewater, probably crossed some of the the wetland areas and of course, it was a, it was a kind of a snake shape going up and down the hill. Wasn't straight at all back in the day.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Uh, this is curiosity question, Brian, there there's a for sale sign on that lot, isn't there?
Uh, well, that was for sale for a while, I I'm not sure it's on the market right now, though.
Okay, all right.
All right. Great, what else we got, Julie?
That's it.
That's it, great. I'll look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, Russ, got one question for you.
Sure.
Um, regarding the uh, Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, are you gonna present that there?
I am.
Okay, good, good, cuz I was gonna call into that, but uh, I'm having my hip replaced on the day before that, so you know.
Well, good luck.
Thanks.
What's the date, what's the date, John?
The third, Monday.
April third, okay, gotcha. Good luck.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, I had a question regarding a late application, I said, I was, I got an email today saying I might be able to come to this meeting and and request a site visit.
Oh, darn it, you should have said something when we're in in meeting, but okay, what do you got, Joe?
There's um, I'm about a half, I'm on South Street, about half a mile south of Apple Lane.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I I I looked at that, okay, yeah, what what's the number?
One oh five.
All right, I'll I'll be out there, I plan on coming out.
Okay, great.
All right, it it's, you just wanna fix the bridge and uh, fix the bank?
Yeah, you'll you'll see, it's just the erosion's gotten worse and worse over the years. It doesn't pose a risk to my driveway or my house or anything else, but I think something should be done, or at least you guys should take a look at it.
We will.
Okay, great.
Are are you gonna submit an application or did you already, you did?
I did, yeah, with the drawing and with uh, photographs and I think John can provide you with whatever I gave him.
Uh, Russ, it's John, yeah, I actually just got all that, I put it together, I sent an email out to a couple of people. Um, so everything's put together, just didn't have any time for the agenda.
All right, but there, all right, but I don't need a map, right, Joe, I could just walk out there, see where the footbridge is and
Yeah, give me a call.
That area.
Yeah, if you give me a call ahead of time, work out a house, I'm typically here, I could show you around a little bit, it's pretty obvious, but I can show you around.
All right, uh, email Karen your phone number.
Okay.
I I don't wanna yell it out. So email her a phone, your phone number and I'll text you.
Yeah, John, John has all that information.
Oh, all right, then then we're good to go, maybe I'll bring John with me for
There we go.
For safety reasons.
That's for my protection or yours?
Our RJ goes everywhere I go, so, okay, thanks, nice meeting you, Joe.
Thanks a lot.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Good night, all.
Night.